Have you all here and apparently there's a lot of folks here who are also excited about what we're going to talk about today, which is great. Dr. Joseph, great to see all of you.
Good morning.
I think I'll just let Laura introduce and...
Sure. Well, I'm Laura Moore, Senior Education Advisor for Mayor Barry. It's been a pleasure getting the chance to work with you all the last two years and looking forward to at least two more in this role.
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask you to start, please. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today. The nine of us have been very busy and we thought that now, in advance of the new year, might be a big time free view and our friends at the Metro Council and the rest of the community thanks to News Channel 3 as to what we've been up to. We'll spend about half an hour or so bringing you up to speed on our internal budget discussions, our streamlining of board policies, our development of new accountability systems, our professional development efforts and our student engagement work. Dr. Joseph will speak to the academic and employee relations and then we're happy to take questions and have a dialogue with you. It's been exhausting and a half.
I was just gonna say, that whole list. You guys have been very, very busy. Thank you.
But also a very rewarding one. Let me say again how much we appreciate the support we received from you, the National Public Education Foundation and other community organizations during our director search last year. That search, in my opinion, was a model for how the school board and the community can rally together around a big decision and what a great decision it was. Dr. Joseph turned out to be exactly the right person at the right time for Metro National Public Schools and frankly for this school board. His calm collaborative leadership style has helped create a climate in which we are working together as a team to try and bring large-scale improvement to our school system, to our school system. This work isn't perfect, but we feel like we're on a trajectory to accomplish great things in the coming months and years and with your help and the council's support and fiscal support as well. And I'd like to brag on my colleagues for just a moment. With nine different personalities and constituencies, it's not always easy to achieve a consensus in the boardroom. But we're on the same page a lot more than often than we're not. And even when we do disagree, we're doing it in a way that doesn't distract from our core mission of driving improvement for all students in all schools. We are committed to building a better board. Earlier this year, Mike Cassely, head of the Council of Great City Schools, visited Nashville and told us that we have come farther, faster in professionalizing our operations than any urban school board he has ever seen in his career. I view that as a compliment for my colleagues and I'm grateful to each and every one of them. What we've been doing is not mind-numbing work that doesn't always capture the headlines, but it's critical to the future of our school system. I will turn this over now to my colleague Jill Sperring. He'll talk about the state of our fiscal affairs.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Good morning, Mayor and team. Thank you so much for the opportunity to report on the work we've been doing. Our efforts have played out. Over more than a half dozen multi-day retreats, countless board meetings, committee meetings, and work sessions. But this is actually our first time to come together and report to you, so we really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
After two terms in the council and more than two years in the mayor's office, you know our budget about as well as we do. But I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that the MNPS budget process, which will be led in the upcoming year by my colleague Tice Hunter, is nationally recognized for its transparency and orderly structure by the National Association of School Business Officers. Thanks to our Chief Operating Officer, Chris Henson, this is a perennially smooth and seamless process. With our current budget of $879 million, our parading budget, we represent 42% of metro government. We take seriously our responsibility to be good stewards of taxpayers' resources and we take seriously your challenge for us to do a better job in planning and stretching the resources that have been recommended by you and allocated by the Metro Council. At your suggestion, we have moved to a three-year budgeting, planning process that we hope will provide more predictability for you and the council to anticipate the school system's needs, which, as you know, are significant. We've also heard loud and clear your urging for us to think more creatively about how to make existing allocations stretch farther. For example, MNPS has launched a new energy efficiency initiative that we hope will generate significant cost savings. In a school system with 14.5 million square feet of building space, we believe energy efficiency and conservation represent the lowest hanging fruit for stretching resources, plus it's the right thing to do for our environment. We know you are leading mayor in America's pledge coalition to carry forward on a responsible climate policy. At a time when this responsibility has been advocated by Washington, we believe cities and mayors and city councils and school boards all must help fill the void. We look forward to working in this space collaboratively with you and the council. Finally, we would be remiss in talking about our budget if we didn't acknowledge the fact that as we do more with existing resources, MNPS still remains an underfunded school system. When it comes to per pupil funding, we are ranked in the bottom third of urban school districts in America according to the Council of Great City Schools. And we know this is a problem that wasn't created overnight nor will it be solved overnight. But we believe having an open and honest conversation about the problem is the first step in finding a solution. Part of the solution means confronting the state of Tennessee over the now universally recognized inadequacy of the basic education program. Experts believe that the state of Tennessee is underfunding MNPS by as much as $100 million. And while the governor and the legislature have invested new revenue to cover inflationary costs, it has not been enough to compensate for many years of underfunding. Every year for the past nine years, Education Week's Quality Counts report has given Tennessee an F in school funding. For this reason, we recently voted unanimously to join Shelby County in school funding litigation against the state. We believe that using every tool in our toolbox is necessary to advocate for Nashville students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers. And we believe this sends the right message to Nashville's citizens. And we're hopeful that this legal dialogue will produce results. So now I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Joanne Brandon, who will talk about our work with the Panasonic Foundation.
Thank you. Good morning. Mayor, the work that we've done for the past 18 months would not have been possible unless we had linked in to some expertise in terms of professional development. And it was through Dr. Joseph's recommendation that we use the Panasonic Foundation for our professional development. The foundation was founded in 1984 to work with urban school districts around the country, also with boards, teachers' unions, and other organizations so that they could improve. Their mantra is equity for all students. And so they delineate equity from equality because students need more when they have some deficits. And so the work is based on the major characteristics of an effective board. And those characteristics are having a strong belief, mission, and value system, a mission statement. And they helped us with this, aligning your work with a strategic plan and having sustainability, accountability, collaboration, and working as a team and being unified. And so we're trying to move in that direction as we build a better board. Certainly without coherence, the work cannot get done. And so we have to support our superintendent and the work that is going on. When we began with them, they talked to us about the roles of boards and the role of the superintendent. And so we tried to understand where we fit in the plan. And then we moved on to our vision and mission statement and our values and our beliefs. We worked very hard. That was with the large group. And it has paid off. And we're moving now towards a better board. We are respectful of each other. We appreciate each other. And that is important, I think. After we established our vision and mission statement, we asked that we move toward determining what a great school would look like. And then we went a little further and said that we wanted to know what successful students looked like. And so we determined that. And then we moved on to what we should be doing and how we can be better and setting priorities. And so the work is ongoing. We want to do the right things and we want to do things right. And so we are mentioning the things that we want to do right in terms of monitoring our student achievement, our director's evaluation, our own evaluation, promoting and being a champion for the superintendent. And the things that we want to do well are within the processes and protocols and, as we say, staying in our lane and remaining active and participating. So we thank you for this opportunity to let you know what has been going on in terms of our professional development.
Great.
And so now, Ms. Pierce will speak to you about the Gallup.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Thank you, Mayor Barry, for having us. As Dr. Brandon stated, we did all the groundwork working for how we can be a better board. And so much of that goes back to how the nine of us individually are wired. And Dr. Joseph brought us the Gallup Strength Finder assessment. And we're all familiar with Gallup doing public opinion research since 1930s, but it goes much deeper. And we can use that in ways to learn more about each other. And so it was a complex kind of questionnaire and survey, but the results were uncanny. And they were so accurate that I think when we did go over that at our retreat, it kind of got some laughs going of how we really are. And maybe that's more in our wiring and less than maybe a motive behind something. And so I know I pulled mine back out. I would encourage all of you to do that. It's about 50 pages long.
Oh, gosh.
And it really...
It's a deep dive.
It really picks you apart. And the way it's even written, the language is fun. And so I even read some to my family last night and they were laughing. It says, "Mary's motto is data is data." No one is gonna, no one in this board is gonna argue with that.
Right.
So part of that just was able to let us see and even to know back and forth. This is just how we approach a problem, how we approach finding a solution. And it was just really very helpful. So I took a couple of screenshots of mine that I'm going to even be using with my children because they were like, "Where did you get this? This is so you." And so we want to incorporate that, just our interpersonal skills, because we all have the same goal. We know that. We all ran for school board because we want to have great schools for our children. And we do come at it differently. And so this was helping kind of peel back those layers and find that we really all have the same heart for our children. So and then that really segues right into the other work that we did that Ms. Hunter will speak about with the Arbinger Institute.
Good morning, Mayor Barry. You may recall that not longer after we hired Dr. Joseph in May 2016, he gave the board and I think the entire district a homework assignment to read Leadership and Self-Deception. It's a book by the Arbinger Institute, which has more than 35 years of experience working with organizations in the corporate, healthcare, education, government, public safety, and nonprofit sectors. We all read the book and it was an eye-opener in helping us to understand the concept of self-focused inward mindset and result-focused outward mindset. Through subsequent training and coaching, we've made a tremendous amount of progress as a group. According to Arbinger, 70% of organizational effort change fails, but instead we want to be a part of the 30% that succeed. And we've worked extremely hard to get there. Arbinger says that one of the critical reasons for failure is that change efforts usually focus on behavior rather than what drives behavior. Organizations that foster the right foundational mindset are able to ensure that employees sustainably adopt those behaviors that drive the desired results. As others here today have said, we're not perfect, but we're doing our best to get there, although we have so much more to do. We're getting closer to what we need. We have an extremely talented board and I don't think we give each other enough. And also Cameo and Dr. David Sevier spends a tremendous amount of time in keeping us together. We have two doctors-level professionals on our board in Dr. Brandon and Dr. Gentry. We have masters levels with, I think Christian has two masters and myself, I have one. Will, I think we're all afraid of moving away from these talking points. I think he wrote them all for all of us. But we, I mean, we have, there's so much talent. Mary is the numbers person. Jill is the reading. She knows everything about education. And Anna just keeps, she does a tremendous job in her leadership and keeping us together. And we also have a tremendously talented attorney in Amy Frogan. I'm going to pass it on to her. She speaks more about our governance. So thank you guys for having us this morning.
So thank you for having this conversation with us this morning. During my five years on the school board, we have been frequently lectured by external organizations that we should merely operate like a corporate board. But the reality is, like the mayor and like the council, we are democratically elected officials and we don't have the option of just ignoring our constituents. The school board has been operating under a set of corporate style policies that were adopted in 2002 prior to current thinking about how to drive large-scale school improvement. 15 years ago in Nashville was a very different time.
I've heard that.
Yeah. And things change. And in our case, policies change. So with this in mind, we recently asked the Tennessee School Boards Association to advise us on how to best overhaul our policies in order to bring us into the here and now and to prepare us for our future. What we learned by consulting with TSBA and the National School Boards Association was that we are one of only a handful of school boards operating under what had become a disjointed and disconnected set of policies. Now we're correcting this problem with technical assistance from TSBA's legal and policy team. We're undergoing a top-to-bottom rewrite of policies in six different categories: school board operations, fiscal management, support services, instructional services, personnel, and most important, students. This is a process that won't fully play out until next summer, but by the time we get to the other side of this work, we hope to have a more coherent set of policies that are better aligned with state and federal laws. And we will have policies more in tune with the needs of the students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers whom we serve. To be clear, none of us are interested in becoming a management board. We've hired a superintendent and we're giving him plenty of room to manage and maneuver. But through this policy overhaul, we're establishing more meaningful accountability measures and setting the table for good governance in the future. And speaking of accountability, I will turn this now over to my colleague, board colleague, Welpingston, who co-chairs our Director Evaluation Committee with Dr. Sharon Gentry. And they're going to brief you on the design of our new board self-assessment system and director evaluation system.
Thank you. Mayor, my and Dr. Gentry's role is to brief you on the new accountability system we're developing, which we hope will benefit not just this school board but future boards. And I'll discuss the process at a high level and hand it over to Dr. Gentry to describe the crux of the work, which is a new director evaluation instrument that's aligned to our strategic plan and nationally validated key performance indicators. So we, earlier this year, engaged Cross and Jofthus, a national consultancy to assist us in designing and developing these assessment accountability tools. This is groundbreaking work for the school board. In fact, our thought partners at the Council of the Great City Schools tells us that we actually have the potential to inform the entire field, which is not something we hear every day. As a starting point, we thought it was critical to first hold ourselves accountable. So earlier this month, using a framework developed by the Institute for Educational Leadership, we administered a self-assessment of the school board. This included nearly 150 different measures, probing everything from our community engagement to superintendent relations. And we may pare that down in the future, but first we're going to look at the analysis, make it public, and then make some decisions from there. And this will be very much a work in progress. So let me turn it over to Dr. Gentry to talk about the rest of it.
All right. Thank you, Will. So one of the things that we find ourselves doing often, not just as a group but to our constituents, is reminding people of the things that we're actually responsible for, that we as board members have only three responsibilities, right? We set the budget, we hire the director, and then we set policies. And a part of that hiring and working with the director is the evaluation process. So during my, I don't know, almost 10 years on the board, we've had everything from a very long list of very qualitative percentage checkmark assessments to one that was resulting in a couple of CDs that were given to us to filter through reams and reams and reams of data. And so we knew that we owed it to Dr. Joseph to be able to put in front of him, in front of his team, an instrument that not only allowed us to evaluate against some solid metrics. So I don't know if Will mentioned the KPI work that we did with Council of Great City Schools as well. But we were to identify solid metrics that other urban school districts are using to really monitor the director, monitor the performance of the system, monitor the progress that we're making with our students. And so we, understanding that nobody's perfect, the goal here is to make sure we end up with a tool that not only allows us to be transparent with the public about what our performance is and where our opportunities are, but to give honest feedback to a director that's actionable and gives him clear direction on how to move forward from where we are to where the board needs us to be. We then reached out to a consultant, Jean-Claude Bressard, who was a former superintendent himself in Chicago Public Schools. He's no longer with the consultant firm that we're working with. He's moved on to the Gates Foundation. But he put us on a very good path with a solid instrument that we have gone through with a fine-toothed comb. We've adjusted the language and the verbiage. We've gotten input from Dr. Joseph. We've encouraged Dr. Joseph to go to his team because ideally what you have is a tool that allows him to cascade down because the work doesn't all happen by him. It happens through him and his team. We kept it in line with our strategic framework. And I think we've gotten a lot of kudos now on a strategic plan, not only from this board that everyone has put input into but has been able to buy into probably for the first time that I can recall in my time here on the board. But we have major buckets that we're looking at. We're looking at our students. We're looking at our people. We're looking at our organization. And we're looking at our community. So the strategic plan definitely aligns with the director's evaluation so that we're very clear on what we're measuring and what success looks like. So we've, in addition to the KPIs and other more qualitative measures are going to be obviously Dr. Joseph's leadership style and his interpersonal skills. And so we have a lot of, a few surveys that we do today that are called climate surveys with our teachers and with our students and families. And we'll take a look at those and hopefully be able to introduce others that'll actually give, allow us to give feedback in those spaces as well. We talk a lot about, we want our students to feel safe. We want our parents and the community members and those who are supporting us to be welcome within our schools. And those environments are important to allow principals and teachers and students to do the things that are necessary to recognize the success that we've asked of them. So much of the work was developed using a solid methodology by BoardSource. This organization provides technical assistance to other organizations and they actually support good, good governance, which again, to Amy's point, is primary one of our responsibilities and how we do our work by being a solid governing board, not a managing entity. When the design work is actually complete, we'll be able to automate the evaluation process in a digital format. Again, so it was to provide the results of it more expeditiously and then be able to provide that data in a transparent format. You've heard this word. It's, I call it the D-word. Will refers to it as the unicorn, but our ultimate goal is to get to a dashboard. So all of the KPIs that we're measuring, all of the data that we're gathering, all of the things that we're holding ourselves accountable to and the director and the system accountable to, we'll be able to produce a dashboard that will live in a space that's transparent to the community and transparent to all of our stakeholders so they can walk this journey with us as we monitor our progress against these KPIs. The work isn't perfect, but we have probably gone further in this one year, I'd say two years nearly now, along with Dr. Joseph's leadership than we have in a very, very long time. So I've said this as a personal goal, and I think we're all buying into this. Ultimately, we want to create a culture, even on this board, so that those that are listening today, those who have been watching us in the past and are considering to run for a seat at the table, understand what's expected of them when they come. And so the beauty of having the staggered terms is that we'll always have bodies here that recognize and remember the work that this board has done and the importance of it and its value to the district and to the system and to the students. So that when you decide to come to this table, please come, understanding what's expected of you.
Is this my turn?
Yes.
I didn't get a line to introduce.
It's A, okay. I'll pick up where you left off. But that would be a great segue for the things I'm going to talk to you about. One of the great things about being a board member, just like I'm sure being a mayor in Nashville, is that we get to work with some of the brightest, most talented, and most interesting men, women, and young people in the world.
And you are the coolest.
You see what I did there? I am. I am. I'm the baby with the baby. Whether it's nurturing the growth of potential national merit scholars across our district or hearing from the student-run record label of Pearl Cone or watching the mariachi band from Glencliff, our young people really are doing amazing things. With this in mind, the board recently instituted a new tradition to begin board meetings once a month with student musical performances and visual art displays. So around 4:45 PM on any second Tuesday of the month, you can literally watch a performance by one of our school performance groups, be they musical, theatrical, or anything in between, excuse me, while also being awed by the stunning visual displays. This started under Dr. Gentry's term and has continued under Ms. Shepherd's leadership. No other school board in America is entertained the way that we are and we love it. To kick off our meetings on a positive note, we each take time to talk about 30 seconds in our district. Sometimes it goes a bit over and that might be my fault, but we want to make sure that we highlight the great things that are happening in our schools and across Nashville because it doesn't always get talked about if we don't say it. And this helps kind of to take the edge off before we get into those tough decisions and conversations. I'm very grateful to my colleagues for supporting a new initiative to bring on school board interns to support our work and create educational opportunities. I have with me today one such intern. She's actually a part of your mayor's council also, Ms. Dawn Effianai, a sophomore MLK. And she's a shining example of the pipeline we look to create for student leaders in Nashville. The goal of this internship is both educational and developmental. I'll be honest, this is my pilot year, so I really don't know what it's going to look like, but it's been insightful so far. They have given me their voice, their assistance, their thoughts, their energy, their insight, and to be honest, their youth. So I'm very, very pleased and proud of them so far. Along with that, our community engagement committee is in the middle of a fresh start where stakeholders will be engaged to offer authentic feedback. This includes parents, teachers, community organizations, and of course, our students. We look to meet for the first time next Thursday and I just, I can't wait. But finally, in an effort to boost organizational culture and morale, we spend more time these days recognizing employees and community members who are making outstanding contributions to MNPS. And there are quite a few of them. To be clear, this was an outgrowth of our strategic plan where we initially identified our people as a main focus of our growth. On their face, these activities may not look mission-critical, but taken in their totality, they're helping us build a more student-focused and employee-focused culture in the boardroom. And that definitely matters. Like the others, I'll acknowledge this work isn't perfect, but we're definitely pointed in the right direction. Dr. Joseph, take it away.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. First, I really do want to thank you for your leadership. You know, this is my fourth school district that I have worked in. Sometimes people say I'm young. I'm like, "I'm old. I'm getting so old." You know, this is my fourth district. But I've never been in a district that has had a mayor that has been so focused on getting things right on behalf of children in the city. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I mean, we, people don't see how often we meet. I mean, we see each other a lot, you know? And we talk a lot about this work because, and I sense your passion and commitment for getting it right for children in this, in this city. I mean, that's, that's one thing when people see us on camera, but off camera, I can attest that you're more committed than ever to asking those questions, "Are we getting it right for kids and how do we know?" And I do greatly appreciate that. You know, I can't believe that it has been a year and a half since I've been here. And, you know, when I got here, people would constantly ask me, you know, "How's the board? How's the board?" And it's sort of like, I guess it's like your second marriage, you know? Maybe things didn't work out in the first marriage, but in that second marriage, you look and I'm like, "My wife is beautiful. What are you talking about?" I don't quite see what that first person saw, you know? And that, that has sort of been the case here with these nine board members because we have, I have found all of our board members to be extremely committed and passionate about doing what's right for children. We might not agree all the time on how we approach things, but the what is never questioned. And since I've been... I mean, that has been a consistent message from all nine of our board members. You know, so my challenge has been, so how do we get into that work? And since day one, I think on my first day on the job, you and I were at the library, and we declared that literacy was going to be a focus in this district, and we have really geared up to prioritize our resources and to think through, how do we systemically ensure that children get high-quality literacy opportunities by design, you know, every day in every classroom? It takes time to dramatically transform, I mean, when one in three students weren't achieving, it takes time to accelerate, to understand the why, and then do something about it. But in a year, we feel good about the fact that as a result of you supporting our budget last year and the wise investments that this board has made, I mean, in one year, we've dramatically increased equity within the district, where, I mean, now we have doubled the amount of students that are taking dual enrollment courses. In one year, that's pretty significant. We've nearly doubled the amount of students that are actually taking the industry certification exams, because we were in a district where we have lots of children who don't have money, and they couldn't afford the test, and this board said, that's not right, and we can do something about it, and they did. So now we can ensure that that is happening. I mean, we're a district where 81% of our kids are graduating, and for a large urban district, that is good. The bad news is, you know, 19% are not, and we've got to do something about that, but we recognize that that work is there. And in a time when ACT scores are pretty stagnant, we're seeing a slight incremental growth, but we're doing it with 95% of our students taking the test, and we increased that number by almost 2,000 children in one year, so we're giving more access, and while we're giving more access, we're seeing incremental growth. But this board has been clear that our vision is to be the fastest-improving district in the country, so we won't accept incremental growth and pat ourselves on the back, we recognize there's more work to do. One of the things we have to do is to accelerate that work, and that's, I think, all of the foundation that this board has done this year is just doing that. I mean, when you think about the fact that they are aligning my evaluation to the school system's evaluation, and then the school system's key performance indicators, it's putting us in the right trajectory to be clear about what we focus on. And, you know, I've said over and over again, one of the reasons school districts don't move forward is because they can't focus, and they don't focus. And focus makes a difference, and we have not only focused, but we're prioritizing our resources to accelerate efforts on those things that we care about. And it's something that seems simple, but most large districts just don't get that right, and it's one of the reasons that most districts don't move forward. And this district is going to move forward, because this board is getting it right, and I really commend you for the efforts that you have put into that. Because we recognize that if we do these things well, if we focus, if we direct our resources in the right place, if we hold ourselves accountable, we're going to set the stage for the kind of large-scale improvement that you and the city has demanded of us. And we believe that if we build public confidence in the work that we're doing, then we can make the case to taxpayers that we're worthy of additional resources to drive continued improvement over time. You know, additionally, I'm really pleased to report that our employee relations are strong. We have worked very closely with MNEA and SEIU, and we've done it because it's the right thing to do, you know. I've said it when I interviewed, that we, you know, you don't get wide-scale improvement by having a top-down approach. You get, you get large improvements when the people closest to the work have a voice, and we have been intentional with working with our unions to give them a voice and to let them know that, you know, together, we can make this the best place in America to educate children and to work, and we're actively working to do that. So I've been very fortunate to have great leadership within MNEA and SEIU, and we're actually in the process of establishing memorandums of understanding with both organizations, so we can be clear about our commitment, not just in word but in paper. And again, I thank the board for their leadership in helping us to do that. So to conclude, we really appreciate your support with the high-quality early learning programs that we have underway. Laura, thank you for the tremendous work that you've been doing in helping us to get the right people around the table and the right amount of public-private funding to make that happen, because government can't do it alone, as you continuously say, and I think the business community understands here in Nashville. That's what makes us such a great place to educate children, and I really do believe that the entire community is coming together to focus on the most important resource that we have, and it's our children. So finally, again, I'm very honored to not only work with you as mayor, but our vice mayor and our 40 members on our council, they have been extremely dynamic and supportive in helping us to make this, to ensure that we move forward in a very supportive education. So I'm honored, and with the trust and confidence that you've placed in me, we're doing the best to live up to this community's high expectations, and I can promise you that, I can't promise you that we'll always score a touchdown, but I will promise you that we'll continue to move it down the field. I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Shepherd at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph. We sincerely appreciate your leadership and your vision, and the fact that you, through your leadership styles, you have brought us all together around the table very well. We really do appreciate that. Mayor, we are past the bottom of the hour, so we're done with our report out, I think everybody did a very good job, and so we haven't answered any questions. Your team, yes?
Absolutely, and I do have a few, but before I do, I just want to say, wow. I am overwhelmed with the incredible professionalism of this board, the fact that you all are public servants and that this is not your full-time jobs. This is a job that you, it's not, I know. This is a job that you get up and do because you care so deeply about our kids and our community, and it really shows, and it shows around this table, the dedication, the depth and breadth that each of you bring with your different skill sets and your different passions, that this is a highly functioning board. I want to just say once again how pleased I was that Dr. Joseph was the superintendent that we brought in and that you all took such a great leadership role in making that happen. I think he is, as was stated, the right person at the right time for our community, and that shows as well. It's hard for me to believe that it's only been a year and a half, especially based on the comprehensive report out of all of the amazing work that each one of you have done. When Dr. Brandon said that it's about doing the right thing and it's also doing it right, I think that is something that this board has absolutely embodied, and you do it every day, so I'm grateful. With the report out, there are a couple of questions I'd like to dig a little deeper on, if we've got some remaining time. So I think what I want to say is, you know, one of the missions that you have is to be the goal of the fastest-improving urban school district in America, so which parts of what you've shared with me today are going to be the most impactful when we're talking about achieving that goal?
Mayor, I think that the accountability systems are something that this board has not had in the past, both the board's self-assessment tool to drive our own good governance, and we'll administer that probably on a semi-annual basis, and like I said, that's 150 different measures that look at our performance from all different angles. But this new director evaluation system that Dr. Gentry described goes into, probably by the time it's done, about 60 different measures of the superintendent performance, and it's everything from academic indicators, the KPIs include ensuring adequate annual growth and academic growth in reading and math, to, you know, closing of the traditional achievement gaps. Improvement for English learner students, in my case, 40% of the kids in my district are English learners, 10 times the state average. I think, we believe, if, you know, if we can, you know, improve things for young Americans, all votes will rise, in addition to the work that we need to continue to do with our traditional achievement gap closure work. And then we're also measuring, I think for the first time significantly, the climate issues that were mentioned earlier. So student perception, parent perception, obviously teacher perception and opinion is very important, and the totality of it, I think, will kind of drive organizational change, but Dr. Gentry?
Yeah, so I think the, maybe, I didn't hear it, the thing that did not come out is that we're also working towards aligning our agenda with the strategic plan, so that we're talking about the right things, the things that matter, the things that are going to actually help us understand where we are and the things we need to do to keep us on that path of becoming the fastest-improving school district. So, you know, I think that simply said, I think what we've managed to do with the work is we've eliminated the randomness, and so we're not chasing, we're actually driving. We're finding ourselves in a position where we can be proactive and less reactive, that the things that matter and the things that are important are not things that are being handed to us, they're the things that we are aware of, and they're the things that we are responding to by design, because we have more intentionality in our actions, there's intentionality of our conversations, there's intentionality when we talk about what it really means to be the fastest-improving. And so we're trying to move away from the cliché-ish type responses that we've given in the past about, well, what do we want from our director of schools? Because moving fast is not always an option, and moving fast doesn't always get you what you want, because we also need sustainable change. Again, so it's not just about sustainable culture change here at the board, but sustainable change for our students and for our parents and for our teachers. And so again, you know, moving away from the randomness, having more intentionality of thought, more intentionality behind our decisions, that aren't about solving the symptom we see today, but understanding the problem so that it's different for the years to come.
We've ratcheted up accountability, and now we have to ratchet up support. You know, you have to have high accountability and high support, and that's something, you know, as we look at our budget, we have to continue to prioritize, you know, to accelerate, you need an accelerant, and then we've got to look at the resources that we have to really target where we want to see more dramatic growth. But we're clear, you know, we're clear about where we want to grow, now we have to help provide the supports and the resources and put those resources in schools, because again, as we talked about, we, one challenge is, we haven't aligned our resources around targets historically, and that's been a challenge that we're working towards now. But schools, you know, schools need a real targeted resource, and we have lots of KPIs right now, we have more KPIs than we have resource for, and we're being explicit now in terms of the change management process with schools on the say, focus on something, and that something is literacy right now, you know, put your eggs in that basket, and let's see that growth quickly. Like, we expect to grow faster in that area, because it's an area that we feel if we do well, and it'll resonate around other areas. But we also need to make sure we put supports in, you know, the social-emotional learning, so you'll see in this budget, a real focus on social-emotional learning, as last year we placed a lot of emphasis on academics. This year, we recognize, you can't get to the academics if you don't get to some of the social-emotional needs that our children have throughout the district, and, you know, we'll stagger it over time.
So, so board, I hope that you saw exactly what he just did there. I counted 15 times where he has said "resources" and he asked me for money. So I just want you to be very proud of your superintendent. These private meetings that we have as well, often, I don't usually count the number of times he says the word "resources," but I want you to know that he is absolutely laser-focused on making sure our kids get what they need, so thank you again, Dr. Joseph. And speaking of resources, you had mentioned, I think, the exciting work around making our buildings more energy-efficient and sustainable. What kind of a cost savings do you think we might be able to see from that? Do we have any numbers on that?
Yeah, wait, so in the short term, we're hoping to save at least $3 million a year is our immediate target, and we're working to actually, I'm pushing the team to ask, how can we even be more aggressive than that? Because again, I think there's lots of opportunity. It's a combination of changing behaviors within buildings, as well as just, you know, changing some of the equipment within buildings, so I think a combination of both will get us even more dramatic results.
Great. So what do you all need from the community at the moment in order to help advance some of that work that you're doing to try to improve our student outcomes? What is that request?
Well, I do want to make this plug, that the community engagement committee has its first meeting November 30th, and that will be a time for us to hear feedback but to also make an ask. So, you know, we have Community Achieves and Communities in Schools, just two of the wraparound service providers and kind of facilitators that we have in our schools, but they both have given me their laundry list of volunteer opportunities, resource needs, supports, the requests for community partners, so I would love for as many to come that will to be able to hear and kind of plug themselves in.
So, Member Bugs, where is that, and what?
It'll be at the board at 5:30 November 30th.
So at the board?
At the board, yeah, in the board room.
You know, from, I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
From my district, in District One, one of the things that the principals really push is parent engagement. So that's why it's been a huge thing for us to work with the principals as a district to improve the culture in our schools, to make our schools more welcoming, and just being very intentional about, I heard Dr. Joseph having a sidebar conversation, you weren't even talking to me, I was eavesdropping, I know, about encouraging PTOs to be formed and to be solid and to be active within our schools, and again, more intentionality in how do we bring our parents into our schools, into the classroom, so that the students know that they're supported, that they're aware of the things that are happening, that they're aware of ways that they can be partners in their child's education. So improving parental engagement is a big push as well.
Mayor, community schools was mentioned, and Ms. Frogge and Ms. Spearing are kind of our resident experts on that work. Can you speak to that and kind of what that looks like in terms of?
Sure. Well, community schools are schools that provide wraparound services for children in need, and they can be structured in any number of ways, because they provide for the community that they serve, so they can have healthcare provided, or laundry facilities, meals for children at night, enrichment activities after school. And the idea is just to get children who are coming to school with unmet needs on the same playing, leveling the playing field in the same position as children who may have more resources. And so that's a really, it's a really good way to serve a lot of our students, because we have such a large proportion of free-to-do lunch students, about 75%. And so we have expanded the community schools program that, through MNPS, but also there are lots of opportunities for partnerships outside the school system, and we're seeing some of that happening. But it's a great way to bring the community in, to just, parents, community members, businesses, to provide resources that they have, skills that they have that may help the students.
Now, I would just add to that, that the schools belong to the communities, and to keep the schools open, you know, so that the communities can have access to the schools, that we provide EL services, tax preparation, all sorts of classes for our parents, is so important. And then in terms of what the community can do for literacy, the fact that literacy is our focus, and our students have such a need, not only for books, I mean, can't get enough books, and we have lots of organizations that are helping us with books, even Chick-fil-A now, instead of giving a Happy Meal, you get now, with the Happy Meal, I guess, you get a book. And so, you know, that's, we've only scratched the surface though, haven't we? There's so much more we can do to get books in the hands of kids, to get parents into the schools. We have reading clinics, and we have about 800 volunteers in our reading clinics, but we need more. We need to expand that, to help students, just to talk to our EL students, to have that communication, it's so vital to their success.
And I want to call out Kent Oliver in particular, you know, he's, the library has been working very closely with us too. We're in the process right now of figuring out how we can get more kids' access to limitless libraries. Now, we're talking about how do we expand our summer, our summer reading program, so they're not optional, they're more mandatory here, and we work with the library, so we're consistent about that messaging. I mean, we've been working with Sheila Callaway, Judge Callaway, to talk about, you know, how do we do more to provide support to our neediest students? So we're, you know, a lot of the resource, we're trying to do a better job working with other agencies to maximize the resources, so there's not redundancy in effort, we can be more efficient. So that work has started, and we hope to continue that.
Member Pierce, I think.
I would just say, I would love to see more empty nesters and retirees adopt a school. I was a principal last week at Sylvan Park, and they have a volunteer who comes every day and works on the kindergarten hallway named Ms. Carm. She's a retired kindergarten teacher who moved to Nashville from New Orleans after Katrina, but it's such a gift that she reads with kids every day, she was cutting paper and supplies and gathering things for teachers, and, you know, I know that a midlife crisis is coming my way when my kids are gone, and so I hope that we'll be able to go adopt another child in a school and give back. So it's just something to consider, and it's easy, go to your local school, or, you know, we can come to the community engagement meeting and find a place for them to plug in, it's invaluable.
Member Hunter?
Yes, I would like to say, last year, we spent a tremendous amount of time doing listen and learn.
Go to your local school, or, you know, we can come to the community engagement meeting and find a place for them to plug in. It's invaluable.
Member Hunter?
Yes, I would like to say, last year, we spent a tremendous amount of time doing listen-and-learn sessions throughout the district. And through those sessions, we learned that, or Dr. Joseph determined that he wanted to divide our district into four quadrants, so now we have the four community soup's. And this year, I'm serving as vice chair with Amy Froeg on Governance Committee, and I would like to see us look at what equity appears like, or what it is like in each quadrant. Because my district, as Will mentioned, southeast is so different than North Nashville and Madison and the Hermitage District. So I'm, I would like to focus those sessions, hopefully with our new community engagement person, focusing on equity and what that looks like throughout the district.
Dr. Brad?
I was going to mention the equity, knowledge from the community, a knowledge base about equity and how important that is to understand that many students have more needs than others. So, yeah.
Chair Shepherd, I'll turn it back to you just because I know we're at the time, if you have any closing remarks.
I really don't, but I just want to say one more time how much we appreciate your time this morning, and we know that your schedule is packed. And so we really do appreciate you letting us tell you the work that we have done. So you and your team.
Well, thank you, and I really appreciate you all making the time to come down. Now, I can't leave this without mentioning traffic, so, you know, transit is really important for the equity of our children. Just saying. If you want to talk about equity, it's about being able to get around. All right. Thank you all. Dr. Joseph, thank you, and thank you to all. You guys do a great job, and I'm so thrilled that you are the school board members for our community. Appreciate you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We haven't got to mention the traffic word, but wait.